Alright, good evening everyone. I'd like to call this board meeting to order. LaPierre Community Schools is a dynamic community organization embracing our students with a quality learning environment, developing independent and confident learners for the future. Mr. Squire, can you say a quick?
(Inaudible) 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 Moving very long, our first item this evening is recognition. The number of outstanding students for recognition tonight. Mr. Wanniger, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. What a fun night we have in store for those members of the community joining us this evening. But always a great opportunity for the board and the central office leadership team to recognize some of our outstanding students. And tonight, we are very pleased to honor a number of students in the district from a variety of grade levels. The first of which we'll be recognizing this evening, Mr. Vice President, our Kaleidoscope Student Writing Publication Award recipients. Recently, six LaPierre students were honored for their writing by the Michigan Reading Association. MRA publishes Kaleidoscope, an annual collection of student writing from grades kindergarten through 12th. And all published students are invited to a luncheon to be honored further. This year, the following students were published in Kaleidoscope. So what I'm going to do, all the recipients, is ask that you please stand, because some of the students were able to join us this evening and some were not. We've got busy kids with lots going on, as you know. Just to stand up when we call your name. After that, we will invite two of our staff members up here to introduce themselves to the board of the community and explain a bit more of all this process. And then, we have a certificate of recognition for each of the young people here this evening. And when we're done with the presentation, we're going to invite each of them over between the flags here for a photo opportunity and to be able to give them their certificates. So when I call your name, if you just stand and stand up for a long time, we can talk a little bit. (Laughter) From Mayfield, second grader whose piece entitled "Baby Reindeer Cooper," Naomi Luke.
(Inaudible)
Representing Murphy in third grade in his piece "The Beach in Brazil," Andrew LeAndres.
(Inaudible)
Representing Schipper, a fourth grader's piece entitled "The Quest for the Rose," Chloe Vantine. From Trill Elementary School, fifth grade student's piece entitled "Angel Baby," Kaylee Fusina. Roland Warner, seventh grade student's piece entitled "Heroism: What Is It Really?" Matthew Smith. Leanne Junior, student from LaPierre High School's piece entitled "Cherokee Roses," Trinity Phillips. I believe joining us this evening is a recipient from 2017, Olivia Hayes.
(Inaudible) 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 So when a school submits a piece, then that child really gets a beautiful day. They become a published writer. So what we have today for you is a copy of the Kaleidoscope publication. And inside, we have all of the John Handcaps of all of the students. So one day, when one of them becomes famous, we will have their signatures from the beginning. (Laughter) Well, this is for the bar.
Thank you so much.
And so, also, they get invited to a wonderful luncheon. And this is where the students are honored. And at this luncheon, there is usually a published author who speaks to them. There's a beautiful medal ceremony, and there's also some other forms of entertainment. Unfortunately, due to a really large attendance this year, Naomi and Matthew were unable to attend. There was a long waiting list, which we did not anticipate. So we wanted to honor them in the same way that Andrew and Chloe and Olivia has been honored and also
Kaylee and Trinity.
Kaylee and Trinity. So we are going to be doing the actual medal ceremony that we do in front of 300 people one night. (Laughter) Which is much better already. (Laughter) Alright, so should we call our authors out? Yes, let's do that. Alright, so authors, we need you to come on over this way, please. This is not Harvard Park, it's the podium for this event. Olivia, do you want to join us?
(Inaudible) 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 So this is our library next to it, here we go. So this evening, we're so proud to be able to celebrate a few of LaPierre's young authors. We want to thank our writers for their hard work and amazing painting. We want to thank the families and teachers here tonight for all the ways that you support your writers, encouraging them, teaching them a love of literacy, and taking the time to be with us this evening. Families, we know you're very proud of your writers, and we really appreciate your dedication. And when we think about what to say to inspire a group of writers, it only makes sense to seek inspiration from writers themselves.
So at the luncheon this year, we heard from Ruth McNally Barshaw. She's a published author and illustrator. And she shared her journey as a writer, showing us that a story can grow from anything. Some of our best ideas come from our own experiences. The best people to get inspiration about writing is from other writers. So here are some more tips from writers that you might have heard of before. Who remembers that sweet little book, If You Give a Mouse a Cookie? Everybody's probably heard of that book at some point in time. The author, Lauren Numroff, simply wanted to write about something that made her laugh. She pictured a little mouse with cookie prongs in his whiskers, and the rest is history. Here is her advice for aspiring authors. "Don't ever give up," she said, "and read a lot, whatever you're interested in. If you want to be a science fiction writer, read science fiction. My favorite thing in the whole world is to read." Jerry Spinelli, author of books like Maniac McGee and Star Girl and Milkweed, has this advice. "Write what you care about. Writing is a way of completing experiences. It's like things I see and feel have not totally happened until I write about them." We write to tell our stories. Author Stephen King reminds us that we all have what it takes to be authors. He says, "Just remember that Dumbo didn't need the feather to fly. The magic was in him." And so today, being here, being authors, you're telling your stories. Being a writer is special because you're creating something completely new that never existed before. So families, I think we have some medals. Did you find those in the room as well? We're going to ask that you (Laughter) Take a minute now to place your medal around your child's neck. And let's give our authors a well deserved round of applause. (Applause) And thank you to the board for allowing us to introduce Naomi, Andrew, Chloe, and Matthew and Olivia to us. Do you mind?
Thank you. Let's have them join us over here.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Okay, the fun is not over yet. We have a very special presentation for another student recognition. This time, Ford, it is my honor to introduce you to Mr. Nathan Jasper. The MSBOA Michigan Youth Arts Concerto Competition, LaPierre High School senior, Nathan Jasper, one of 12 finalists at the MSBOA Michigan Youth Arts Concerto Competition that took place at Central Michigan University on April 6, 2018, and ended up taking first place with his alto saxophone solo. He'll be the featured soloist at the Michigan Youth Arts Festival in May. And this is not an overstatement, but it's quite possible that Mr. Jasper is the most accomplished musician because of this award in the history of LaPierre Community Schools. (Applause) I'm honored to introduce him tonight, and I know Mr. Hunt and Mrs. Cunner are both here. If one of you would like to join us and share a little bit more about the award with us, we'd really appreciate that.
Alright, thank you so much for having us here tonight. I have a bio that I'd like to read about Nathan, just to tell you a little bit more about his accomplishments. Nathan Jasper is a senior at LaPierre High School and is the son of Sherry Steele. He is the principal alto saxophonist in the LaPierre High School Women Ensemble. He's section leader of the LaPierre High School Marching Band and is a member of the Bell Valley Community Band. Nathan was a member of the 2018 MSBOA All-State Band, first chair in the District 3 Honors Band of the past two years, and has also participated in the Central Michigan University Honors Band. He is also an accomplished jazz musician. Nathan is the lead alto in the LaPierre High School Jazz Band and has performed with the group in the 2017 Michigan Music Conference. Nathan was awarded the second runner-up class AA Most Outstanding Soloist at the 2018 CMU Jazz Weekend. The LaPierre Kiwanis Club honored him with LHS Musician of the Month award. In addition to his musical achievements, Nathan participates in varsity bowling, cross-country, and quizball. He currently studies saxophone privately with John Nickel, professor of saxophone at Central Michigan University, and will be attending CMU in the fall to major in music education and mathematics. So that is (Applause) And I'd like to tell you a little bit about how this concerto competition works. In December, January, the students are able to sign up for what's called solo and ensemble. It's one of the things that our students have available to them every year. And we have quite a few students from LaPierre that go to solo and ensemble. It's really quite impressive how many we send in comparison to other schools. And then, they go to district solo and ensemble, usually held at Emily City. And from there, they get a rating of a one, a two, a three, a four, or a five, one being an A, and then down. If you get a one, then you qualify for state solo and ensemble. And state solo and ensemble happens usually right around St. Patrick's Day, and we actually host that at LaPierre High School, so that's really nice. And then, at state solo and ensemble, you get another rating, one, two, three, four, or five. And then, also, the judge in each room can, they don't have to, they can nominate up to three outstanding soloists in their room. Nathan was nominated in his room, along with a saxophone quartet was also nominated. So they were wonderful. And we actually had a flute player that was nominated also, Miss Emma Sauger. And so, if you're nominated, then you can go on and perform at this concert of competition at Central Michigan. And at this time, their solos must be memorized. And they go and they perform again, and I think Mrs. Lylietta, she said that there was over 100 in the whole state that were nominated for this. And we kind of counted, and we thought we saw 95 kids actually go on that day in April. And from there, then they narrowed it down to a top 12. And we have had students in LaPierre make the top 12. I think I can count maybe on one hand, though, from when I was even a kid on up, how many kids have ever even made it to the top 12. And Nathan won, so we are (Laughter) We are just (Applause) If you want to pass it around and see, this is on their website. Sorry, I guess I'll leave that paper It has the 12 finalists, and there's actually four, there's four students that win. And then, he will go to, it's at Western, correct? Yes. It's at Western Michigan for the Michigan Youth Arts Festival in May, and perform. He will be a featured soloist, there'll be an orchestra that plays with him, and it'll just be extremely
Awesome.
Cool, and it's really awesome.
And now, we have the
And what, he's the nicest kid. (Laughter) I couldn't go to a more well-deserved child. Like, I just want to point that out, too. He is so polite and such a wonderful, wonderful student. So I'm just I think he'll play for you.
Awesome.
(Laughter)
Richard, where are you going?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Alright, well, I have no problem with that. Contrary to popular opinion, we do have the rest of our
(Laughter)
Another thing to suggest, a good change in name for our district, our district of choice is the district champion.
Ah, yes. That's right. Great suggestion.
And just a quick comment, I don't know if you all have had a chance to read these stories yet.
We're going to, we're going to be asked, Mary will scan us, how many of us we can see.
Incredible. There are two in particular, I won't name them because of the context. There are two, and if they would have been here, you would have made a lot of experience with. There are two in particular, very touching, and here for that. There is no doubt why these kids want it. So, anyway, thank you for bringing all of that to us tonight. Let's go ahead.
(Inaudible)
Alright, I'm going to give Mary Moss credit because she said, we have to have, she wanted some music at a board meeting.
(Inaudible)
Well, she's already been very comfortable in the role of boss in the arena. That part didn't tick.
I didn't think it was.
She was trained by the best.
Yeah.
(Laughter)
I didn't think it was.
She's really embracing the role.
Well, I remember finally, a couple of meetings where the jazz band
Oh, yeah.
We had some serious, quick, tap and meetings.
(Inaudible)
More of it. Doug, you'll be playing at the musical instrument next board meeting. He's got so much
I'll get my kazoo.
(Laughter) Right there, wait.
A woodwork demonstration.
Alright, next on the agenda is public comment. I don't see any public comment cards, so that brings us to presentation and budget development.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ritter.
Second follower of the hat. What can you do? Second fiddle to the kazoo. (Laughter) He makes. He makes. But he brings us. Yeah. (Laughter) How much did it make you? Just go on. No, half hour. Oh, boy. So, but you're here. I may be a little rusty sometimes, but cue me in and I'll focus back in on some of the topics we've talked. For Mr. Nolan and Ms. Bush, lives from the past, Mr. Caraway said, say hello to Wolfie on Saturday night. So it's that MSBOA State Conference for the last three days, some great news, some nuts and great news, and then some wonderful news to say you'll get a lady retirement of, I can't tell you what it is, but I can tell you, our expenditures are going up whenever the House figures out, House Bill 5355. And it could range from a few thousand to a lot of thousands. So, let's start in. Let's see, who got my little mouse there? Jared? Keyboard. (Inaudible) I'm here, and Earl, Earl's not calling anymore. Page down, you sure it's on page down? Try page down.
Is this the first, did we get attachments of these?
You did that.
I'm like, did I miss some?
Here we go. This is the special It's just sensitive. There we go. Alright, this could be difficult tonight here. Let's get that set up out of the way. So, a couple items, recap for one, just what's going on, and then get into some of our local items, and it's really a high level of local items. There are six listed, we get into many more than that in our detailed budget that we look at from a local perspective. Then the state, and the state's historical, in particular, the foundational allowance where there's concern and challenges probably in coming years. And then, we finally have all three branches budgets proposed out there, and kind of a two-page chart of some of the more important items to us. And then, more importantly, in the end, our short-term or long-term challenges, which is really the summation of all the slides before. So, as we spoke back a couple months ago, January, they have a new conference space coming up on May 16, I believe, or Wednesday. Those numbers are looking better than they did in January, so that's good news to us. The bad news to that is, the whole focus has started, is to move money around, depending if you sit in the House, the Senate, or you agree or disagree with the governor's proposals. But it is good news that there's more money revenue-wise than there was in January projections. Like I stated, the governor, the Senate, the House, the House came out last week, we can believe the Senate came out, we can have before that. The great news, you'll see, is foundational allowance looks like it's going to be a $200-plus dollar increase for the first time in many years. And then, what we don't, and we haven't heard, and there was not any jingle, usually today, Mr. Scubik does a roundtable with some of the legislators, and that was not on the agenda today. I don't know if that's, they do, because they're not talking publicly, or not hearing, or they just couldn't schedule to come down to Detroit versus Grand Rapids, when we're in Grand Rapids. But not hearing anything does concern me because there's some items in here that are pretty big that could impact districts, and more so Michelle on the curriculum side, long-term, at-risk funding and stuff. So there's the first one, that the MIPSers So there's the first one, that the MIPSers is of utmost concern. And I'll try to do a high level. Man, interrupt me. So MIPSers, the rate we see there, going from 36 to 38, really is comprised of two elements. 26.72 we pay at every dollar of payroll to the state. The 12% is basically the amount that they're taking off the top of the school aid, section 147, which is now in the excess of $1 billion. So it started at about $268 million, some three, four, five years ago, and we're over $1 billion coming off the top. In February, we have a new rate. So now our MIPSer rates really across all the different choices is about 16 different rates. That's the one majority will still staff, or MIPS basic. We refer to them the old guard versus the new ones that are in the hybrid, and there's multiple rates depending if you're choosing personal healthcare fund, if you're choosing modified defined benefit, etc. But that rate there is soon to be changed, because as stated, House Bill 5355 is now actually part of the current school aid adopted a concept called COE, cost of operating expenditures. What MIPSers does is three things. They changed their rate of return from 8% to 7.75% to try to help us, because they weren't hitting 8% in return on the portfolio. And they had to do an adjustment, hence why there's money off the top that's going up. Two, they have what they call dedicating, dedicated deans policy. What that states is, whenever they exceed 7.75%, they take all the money, and instead of us seeing the benefit in the rate, they're moving it over to cover the unproved liability that. So, it's not a bad idea, because it's paying that future debt, because we're trying to get us from 2036 down sooner to reparations in the balance. But it's not the rate in the short term. Correct. For districts. Correct. The third element of this House bill on the COE is to change how we have been doing it my whole career, 28-plus years, and about 50, best I can see, which is now, instead of us paying 26.72 on every dollar payroll, we have fiscal year 17. That the way the legislation is written, it's our total budget less capital. So our payroll's around 25 million, our total budget's around 48 million. So instead of paying 20, I might say 26.72 on 26 million and 25 million payroll, we're gonna pay 20.96 on, say, 40 million, or 42 million, or whatever the number is. 17's the base year. 18 never had done with yet, hence why I said we can't tell you what the outlook is, will be what they compare. They use in their assumptions that payrolls will grow by three and a half percent of the year. So Mr. Keller was here, Mr. Keller would state, everything we've done positively when we're dealing with reduction, stretching, is now come back to penalize, it's much like with the transparency reporting elements. What they're trying to do is move that back from that bigger number to a smaller number, payroll plus contracted services, and not penalize districts. So, some of the story is, our rate's gonna go up, but we can't predict it, and we probably won't be able to predict it until, one, at least the legislation's solved, and two, we're into the fall time, and we have a final expenditure number from 18, so we can compare 17. Lots of detail, but there's lots uncertain there, because we can see $100,000, $200,000 increase in our expenditures with one item like that. That we don't control at all.
And so they've made our budget year nulling statement, right?
No. No. The other side, that we've talked about before, that is embedded out there in the second bill of point, Michigan General Fund predicted to be at 0.4. Their fiscal year ending October 1st, 18, versus number 19, is because there are a number of credits, there's a number of major items. One, just to give you an idea, personal property tax, so the general fund absorbs that, right now it's about 380 million, and by 20, by '26, '27, it's supposed to go to 572 million. And they've talked about moving that from the general fund into the school aid fund, or at least a portion of that that we pay our freight, because right now the general fund's paying 100% of that. But we get some of that revenue to the school aid fund through those property taxes. And then also the roads. So there's lots of pressure points that are still gonna hit us. Right now, the roads are 600 million, but by '21, '22, it's supposed to go to 100 million and beyond. So we're not out of the clear, though this year is as positive as it's been in the last six years. '20 and '21 are gonna pose challenges as we move forward, and you'll see that as we go through. So here's the six elements, and what we have to follow are more charts that I can explain in more detail. So we've seen this in a variety of formats, from our COO pool count to our budgeting. The number on the far right, 4964, our preliminary in October of 17 count. If you remember, not a lot of charts up there, well, we used Fred Matovich four years ago. Fred's numbers have us flattening out, so you see it is coming down, and by 2025, should be hitting our bottom of about 4,000 students. NEP, Fred had predicted us to be about 100 to 125 lower than our actual 4964, and for the last two years, we've been on that trend. So if we look at that number, we'll probably be at about 4825 next year, still better than Fred's. So if you extrapolate that, we probably won't be at 4,000 by 2025, but we'll be at 42 or somewhere in the neighborhood. Our fund balance. So this one, the red line there, is when Treasury says you're below your 5% and you do that two-year consecutive years in a row, and you have to have your budget approved by us, not by your local board. So you see our last three years, we've been adding about 250, 300,000 in three years, about a million dollars, dollars to our fund balance. But with this fiscal 18, we're gonna see a flattening and/or a decrease on some of the pressures you'll continue to hear throughout the rest of the presentation.
Which we had anticipated.
Which we anticipated.
We knew where we'd be from.
Revenue's expenditures, just another variation of that, showing that we're above the line, so we're adding to our fund balance instead of continuing to decrease it. And I believe, is it 12 that, that you said prior to the headsets, when prior superintendent had settled the contracts, and it was big deal for the fund balance track in 2011, the old contract. 11, 12 contracts, so it's several million dollars of fund equity for balance. Cash flow, this is a very important one, because this costs us an interest expense, and we've been changing internally operational things to manage cash flow. So instead of just paying anything that comes in every two weeks, we've been scheduling for the last year and a half to lower that down, as you can see. I think we actually borrowed five, but we hoped to only hit four, so that we'll be able to do it for next year, if we can keep lowering that further down to decrease that down. Because if you get into those high numbers, and you stay in that nine to 10 million, you never come out of there, it just becomes a permanent item in your budget, because you can never get out of that cycle. We've done a great job the last few years to bring that down, to move around our cash, to make sure that we don't have to borrow any more than we absolutely need. P cards, we changed the P card carrier we had, because the new P card carrier gives us a bigger return on the volume of our activities. And so you can see that all of a sudden now, here in 18, we're up to $60,000 in investment revenue. That's not just sitting on our item portfolio dollars that we get, that's most related to the P cards, but some of that is because we work with, like.
Links don't.
Links don't, I want to follow the point, with the changes.
Don't do that.
I know, with giving us a decent rate of return, while 1% versus zero that we had in many of the years, recent bars are very low there. And most of that was the P card activity from our P card. So, the good news is, as inflation creeps in and the interest rates go up, we can make more money, but it also costs us more money.
I was just gonna say, sorry, but in one year, in one district, I thought we went from $100,000 investment value to like 10. And it's interest rate, people don't think about the fact that lower interest rates mean lower return for companies and schools and students. I know, that's why I'm just like, oh, yeah, I should appreciate the player.
Well, the unique part about this, and why I wanted Mark to share it with you, is that we talked about, and we've always talked, it's in vogue, we talk about innovative curriculum and instructional practice, right? But even the unheard innovative practices in every corner of the district, and we're talking about, you know, changing the management of P card, you know, changing the investment strategy, changing the cash flow borrowing, you know, those things have had major positive impacts for us. These are things that they are, or people might recognize, because maybe it's the little, we cannot mix our accounting, but in reality, we're doing a lot of things behind the scenes that are, as mentioned, the new software transition that we will talk about later, but these are things that are helping offset the losses we're experiencing with the decline of revenue.
This sounds like you mentioned to companies, the thing is, if we're losing that much on investment, can you imagine how this is affecting big corporations and their ability? I mean, that's revenue for them to hire people. So I mean, it's a, it's a round circle, and people just don't get that side of it. They often don't understand.
And I know Charlie Bell did a presentation on Tuesday, and the one takeaway that I still haven't figured out how to digest, is we've heard about all the national tax cuts, but if you really look at it, corporate tax rate in the United States went from 35% up to 21% or 20%. The corporate tax rate on foreign earned income went from 25% to zero. So his question is, do you really think money's coming back into the country, or the national, foreign national economy's gonna be the one that abroad has investments for return? And it's, those are points that you don't find.
Nobody wrote that up.
I missed them, yeah.
So now into some of the state historical, so the foundational allowance, like I said, has had lots of fluctuations, you can see a chart here shortly. The more immediate concern is the midterms, and I had some good stuff when we were talking the other day, but we have, it's a little scary, we have new Attorney General coming in, new governor. We have 20% of the House seats, around 20, 21 seats will turn over, they change if only not, but the Senate, 70% of the seats are turning over. So 25 or 36 seats will be new members now. Some of those will just walk across the hall, there'll be House members who are done with their six years in the House, and can only wait to get in the Senate. But that is gonna change for us, and Matt, I, we've talked about this many times, we're on this constant theme, we have to re-educate Lansing.
This is my third several and seven years of this turnover, and when you have that many freshman senators and representatives, the mainstay in Lansing are the lobbying firms, right? And kind of bureaucracy, if you need infrastructure, and so we have established relationships with committee chair people, you know, and leadership, it's, it's, it's good, but you literally are starting, this will be the third time in my seven years that you better go back to Lansing and re-energize those relationships.
And a lot of the state reps are not completing their six years and ready for seven?
I do think that in this environment, I think education's on everyone's mind, but I do think that's a common state way. You know, with teacher shortages and everything else.
That's right.
Somebody wants to get out of there.
Sorry for, obviously the slide is, I actually borrowed this from the state's, they, Senate fiscal updates this presentation annually for the changes, mostly on the foundational allowance, but it's a good historical document that captures. And so if you look to the far right, you see the dollar increase the foundational allowance. And at the top half, it's pretty straightforward, and when you get down past 2008, '09, you start seeing double asterisks, and you have to start reading over on the left-hand side, because what you don't see over there, you see zero for '09, '10, but really there was a corration. And then you go to '10, '11, and you see zero, but really there's a corration. And so you see the pattern that we had corations in those very beginning years coming out of the recession. Now we've had some good years, and we got election year. So there is concern, once we get past our 18, 19 funding, and knowing what's already on the horizon for the general fund, some of the expenditures for the state, 19, '20, 20, '21 are gonna be some challenging times, because the school aid fund does have a fund balance. But depending if you look at the House, the governor, and Senate, some of them are moving around and taking their fund balance down to zero, with some of the funding mechanisms for this year, which will be a concern, because once you use up those dollars, it takes a few years to give it back, and right now, there's no promise on the future that we'll give those dollars back. So, we watch this, it's not predictable, but as I've said to Cole, about every five, six years, you're gonna see a rebasing going on, and we're coming up to that rebasing point again in the history of the foundational allowance.
While you look at it, if we, if we get what we are predicting in our formulas, a projection that saves $200 per, you will have, adding up all the increases since 2012, will have taken nine or 10 school years to get back to 2000 in funding. But that's remarkable to this. When you discount foreign inflation, you can further back.
And then possible, I was just gonna say, possible increase. It's gone crazy in the last.
Or the red heat on gas, getting a lot more than they were in.
So here's the, the three legislative branches, top one's the most important, because that is where we derive the majority-based foundational allowance. Now, I would say, Matt asked this question, so what should we budget? We'll stick with 200. If you follow, if you follow the exact law, they have to compromise on one of the three that they propose. But there's always been a little bit of wiggle room, where they may not follow it exactly, and they may, within the whole context of the school aid bill, they balance it. So I'm being a little more cautious in saying 200, it probably will end up eventually at the 230, maybe even 240. 200 is, once we put it in, we also have other metrics we're measured against, and yes, we go back and change for appropriation stream a year ago, but also are facing a lot of other assumptions on that revenue, that mean revenue stream, so.
And this is, this is a very important point that I want to gloss over for the board to appreciate, because the, a component of the audit is an evaluation of the projections that we're using and annually inputting into the budget cycle, and if those, if those projections are a head merit. And, you know, I, I instructed Mark, and I think, you know, he's, he's responded to that in the last 40 years with a conservative approach to the amount of increase we're gonna get. And it's particularly important this year, because if we have to, if, if we're in a vacuum, and we have to compare this upcoming fiscal year with the following fiscal year, we have greater anxiety about the following year. So in preparing for the inevitable, which we are not, the trends that Mark showed in an election year cycle, and that election year cycle, history of the foundational grant, the last 20, 30 years there, I think it's, it's important to note that when people say, well, you know, you look at these, these three budgets, and you guys should budget for 230 or 240, because, and that's what it says. We have the experience of understanding the nuance of that, how it plays out. If we get it, great. We want it to be, we want it to be a pressure ease at that time, and quite frankly, we're also preparing, although we build an approved budget to present to the board in a one-year cycle, we always budget in a three-year cycle. So heck, keeping an eye on what's gonna happen in subsequent years, we can't act as though we don't know what's gonna happen in 1920, and just pretend, right, kick the can, and I will just deal with it then. So a, a deeper dive this year in the budget cycle will alleviate some, not all, of our requirement in 1920.
Almost like 1920, not either 1920.
Right. Right.
Twenty.
I wish I was a superintendent in nineteen.
Where do you stand?
Compared to two thousand nineteen.
A little, you gotta have a little humor. Um, the one, I have a question. So the one twenty is where they're thinking that's a start. You know what I mean? That's a range, one twenty to two forty?
Well, it's two X, so, so one twenty, so for base foundation districts like us, if you go to the first base foundation, seventy-six, thirty-one this year for about two hundred eighty, three hundred and some districts at that level, there's a bunch of districts about a hundred and fifty that are between seventy-six, thirty-one and eighty-five, I lost track of what the top is, eighty-five or whatever.
Right.
So, so the range actually works, should be flipped around. It's two forty for the bottom.
Oh, but one fifty.
And then as you move up towards the top, the three, five hundred, you move forward to one twenty.
So the whole harmless will get the best.
And the whole harmless districts, which there's now only about twelve from left, only get to one twenty.
Okay. So I, I get it. How can you pick two hundred if you're a hundred and fifty?
Yeah, that's true.
Do you anticipate any increases in charter?
Dollars to charter?
No.
Charters?
Adding charters?
No.
No.
Second bullet is really tied to, I've got to know the shared time, which you'll see on the next page here, but so the difficulty when you look at the hundreds and hundreds of pages of the school aid bill is to try to find these little nuances that are buried within pages and pages of the language. So yes, we're excited about the top one, then we start getting less excited about the next one because now we have to figure out, is it, the Governor says no change, but that's really not true. It's no change to point seven five, which you can see later, he's changing the metrics of some of the detail language and same thing with the Senate version. Truly, the House, there's no change of the current law. Still nice to see the quick twenty-five dollars for wellness for the high school, though that doesn't amount to hundreds and hundreds. It's still nice to see their differentiating. This one at the bottom is a new one I hadn't even heard of until I saw it this week, which is they're looking, and we've heard about it for years, of trying to deal with more rural districts with more roads, with higher per student costs for operating to get a differential in the funding through the foundation. You see, it's a holding spot. So obviously, a House plan is to use that as negotiations in their compromise to get some money in there, depending on, but there's no hint, what, what else they're balancing against. But at least they put something in there to start to indicate, we've got to address this where you can't be giving the same dollar amount to district that's five square miles and expect one hundred fifty square miles to be able to perform the same service level.
Is G U general fund versus special fund?
General fund, yes.
So it's only general fund?
Right. Because you already, you already get for dedicated, for ninety-four report, and we only special needs children's. If they're on the regular bus, we don't think, but if they're dedicated, they already get some dollars for that. We actually get sixty-seven percent of what we, the current cost. Now, the new section twenty-two P partnership district discretionary payment, that one from the Senate is kind of tied in, to my best understanding, the Marshall Plan without getting into the Marshall Plan, but really what it's about is, there's a lot of discussion this week at the conference about consolidation. Bob Moore, who led the, um, study statewide on the funding, um, did a little presentation during the lunch on Wednesday, and basically, there's not enough money. We need about ten and a half billion dollars to get to the funding level of which the report that came out in February says we should be adequate funding students in state. There's no way that's going to happen unless they change the tax base in the state.
And that's when they live in that after the vote, like, right?
Yes, yeah. The equity study that Oakland was cross-selling with businesses and that, but Bob Moore from Oakland kind of left statewide. So this partnership is really to say, districts who are doing partnerships, many of us have been for years, and it's including business services and things, they're creating new rules in order to get more money. But what they're basically trying to do is use the characteristics and say, if you consolidate, we'll give you money. If you force, um, certain services to be consolidated, we'll give you more money. And it's kind of unclear yet because the way it was written, obviously, when the legislation's written, then there's an interpretation, we're not getting a lot of interpretation of this yet. But I think that's a hint for the future right there. Twenty-three F, the shared time pupils, as I stated, so the Governor eliminates kitty earners and then puts a gap on five percent of our overall district FTE. The Senate eliminates kitty earners, does a ten percent cap going forward for year-to-year growth, as the uniform is. So again, it's all in the detail, but the concern is the whittle away at that. There was a slide, and the whole state's concern is, and I don't really understand why because the money's there for foundational allowance, but there are about ten to twelve districts statewide, we're not in that group. Oxford is, Berkeley is, there's a number of districts who pull out about a hundred and fifty million dollars per, if you listen to the state, from the foundation for this, and the concern is just it growing area. And as we've stated before, you asked us to get very innovative, we did. We've worked partnerships in our communities where it's possible, and now you want to penalize us for it. The act risk, I'm going to read, I apologize because there's no way I could put this in a bullet. So give you the Governor's version. The Governor will replace the current formula that's supposed to take place in eighteen, nineteen, our next year, requiring specific allocation apparatus funds in the event a district fall fails to demonstrate at least fifty percent proficiency in E L A by the end of third grade, an improvement career to college readiness, and a requirement beginning October first, twenty twenty-one, that the district partner with M D E and adopt a mandatory school improvement plan. Lots and lots in there. If you go to the House side, House retains the current formula that takes effect in nineteen, but adds a third accountability metric of fifty percent of act risk pupils must be proficient math by the end of eighth grade, and then revises the formula such that one-third of the total grant funds would be allocated to each of the three categories, because the district failed to meet what the accountability metrics. So for Michelle and Casey and Matt and I, that's just a lot of gobbledygook to stay tuned for the future, but it is a concern because again, that's a major funding source for us, and anytime they start to change the rules, we get concerned. Hundred dollars, we've got on that here. And then the last one, the competency grants, um, that is also tied into some of the career technical, will be by the Governor, and some of it from the Marshall Plan also. So there's kind of things that are kind of dovetailed into each other. Did you?
Yeah.
It's not a psych, I think, so.
Turn my camera. Can we schedule our legislators in so they can explain all of this to us?
I know.
Because I would think that would be really fun.
It would.
Because I'm sure they don't understand what they're about to talk about.
The difficulty is for all of us, especially to, one, read it, digest what it means financially, but then to work together collaboratively with Kim and Michelle, and what's that mean for us? For staffing, for limitations, for contracts, if you're in our middle negotiating, always would. We have to be thinking about what not, you know? It's a constant wear on you of trying to figure out, did we do something right that ends up being wrong once one of your budgets gets adopted? So our short-term, long-term challenges start with, you know, the current fiscal year, eighteen, nineteen, that we're building the budget to present to you here shortly in the next month or so. And the good news is with that two hundred or so, we alleviate a lot of our starting point of one point three million by losing our students. The bad news is we have other pressures to also line that budget, so it's just not the one point three million. It kind of works its way up to two million, and so we still have a gap of somewhere between quarter million to three quarters of a million, and depending on a few elements that are still undetermined. I noticed driving, gas a lot in the last two days, went from two seventy-five as I was two ninety-five now, so.
Atlanta went from two fifty, quarter to twenty.
Yeah, so that'll hit us, that'll hit us in the transportation budget where we've been enjoying some pretty low diesel prices, as you said, at least for a couple of years now.
The top is it's going to stay up. Like somewhere's going to be there.
Right. So we'll continue to work towards that, but that, that gap is still there for us, so we're looking at that. The current structure we have is unsustainable long-term. Uh, that sounds to be a scary statement, and some of it is, but we've been managing it every year. But the tools we have to manage are getting less and less in the toolbox, and it's going to be harder and harder to manage as we go forward, especially if we get another fiscal cliff. And so next week, next, what's there, Thursday? Thursday, excuse me, is our budget manager's second meeting. That will be rolling a bunch of this out and actually having breakout sessions for brainstorming and input to help us. Kind of talked about the uncertainty, our capital improvement items. I continue to be amazed at the luck that we've had, and I tell Mark that every day, that overall, we have not had our clammy of items when it comes to boilers and roofs and that. We have needs, but we've been, been able to. You better wash that down. We.
We're thankful.
We're thankful, but we get the video. But Matt knows that Mark and I put pressure back all the time on him and Cole because at some point, we're going to have to deal with some of this decline enrollment talks about, the economical, the economy-related operational stuff is kind of what you just said, the fuel, the utilities, items that we don't control, that world market volatility and stock market, five, six hundred points, and all that is hitting us. And that last bullet is going to continue to be with us for a while, which is, we are addressing, looking at multitude of different security items. Some of them aren't huge, like if you were to install all new cameras, state yard cameras, infrared, uh, picking up movement, not just static, but picking up movement, you can actually identify. So we have that under because that's not going to be a small dollar amount item as we move forward. Some of them will be operational, be built right in, like SROs, and some will be one-time expenditures, capital type of things that we have to do. Some of the long-term challenges, already stated, I'm concerned at this new fiscal cliff. I've got a bad state side use, actually, but pretty much guaranteed by the time we get to this point next year and beyond, we're going to be talking about some critical names of their financial debacle they're going to be facing in the legislature, and it's going to be a repeat of legislation. Declining enrollment, the good news is it's slowing, so that's good news, and it looks like it's going to go a little bit further out than we initially had anticipated some five years ago. So that's, that's a challenge, but it's also a good positive variance for us. Building capacity utilization as enrollment declines, we've already talked about that. Our strategic planning, it's coming up again as we head into the fall, and then identifying the best structure for delivery. And had I been able to grab this video and yet, that I saw at two thirty in the session I was in, it's about two minutes long, and I will pull it up and at least get Mary to share with you. It was probably the theme of the conference this year, which is, we're in twenty eighteen, nineteen. In less than ten years, Bob Lust last week said, in ten years, you will not be able to buy a car or a steering wheel. And much of the technology that's going today, when we talk about we're training kids for a future of jobs that are going to exist, and it's coming at even a faster rapid pace than we have even been told. And so it's going to be scary, that last bullet is going to be scary. How can we best adapt as quick as possible to create the future? And it's probably the last probably twenty years. There's a chart of, we've learned more in the last hundred years than we've learned in the previous two thousand years. And. Well, it's also really an important point for the board to understand that as we bring our community along, you know, as the board has access to greater information and data than the average community member, central office team attends these statewide conferences to get a flavor for what's happening, not just pressures for school aid fund, the state's general fund, state economy. And when challenged, as you will be, when we talk about some of the more radical concepts for changing how we do business in the school district, you must be fortified in your responses that the current delivery model, the structure of how we do business, how we dispense education is not sustainable. You can speak to several reasons why, and it is a challenge to us, but we certainly have to be responsive and provide the community with some viable alternatives of ways that we think we can deliver a great product, but do it more efficiently, and school will look different. Technology is driving that change. Now, it doesn't mean the baby is out of the bathwater, and traditional methods of instructing kids aren't, that are tried and true, aren't all bad. Right, that's not the point. The point is, is that operating the number of buildings that we operate, having all five thousand students show up at the exact same time, requiring identical duplicated services, things like that. Those hard edges of education that we're used to, September start, June end, seven thirty, two thirty, hundred and eighty days, um, thirteen years, right? Those, those hard edges, we have got to push the boundary conversationally, but we also have to have the data and the research behind it that, that shows the community that's simply saying, well, how we always used to do it works. It's going to be a challenge for this force. We use these numbers to tell you, you know, in my, my fifteen-plus years as an administrator, two hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars is some of the smallest dollar amounts we've been tasked with reducing. We've been in millions for how many years, right? Well, it's two million dollar problems here, four million dollar problems here. We're in Dearborn, and Dearborn is an eight million dollar problem. Although these dollar amounts are actually getting smaller because what we've done to streamline has been effective, the cuts are more impactful and deeper, and I don't have to tell you, we haven't thrown any further back than last year, building paras and deans, right? Positions that we get more bang for our buck than you can even fathom, we're cut because that's where we're at. Right? So we don't want to rip this Band-Aid off so slowly because we're, we're so married and tied to the structure. What we're tied to is quality instructional practice, what we're tied to is innovative approaches to delivering education. That's what we're committed to, not operating the same structure with the same buildings. That's not what our commitment needs to be.
Well, I would think, you know, going forward, you know, we need to have, I think, a strategy to how to educate community leaders, community groups at town hall, when people come in, there's PowerPoint or there's materials for the average person to start to be educated, because you're going to have parents and leaders, people that are very much caring about this and the future of the school district. And how do we educate them? Because this is very challenging material for all of us, let alone unaverage parents. So thinking about creating a variety of materials aimed at people, like if you go into the Kiwanis or the Optimus, and you're having a town hall, different types of materials, so that people kind of get the mindset of, we need to innovate even more, still deliver a great education, but we have to innovate, and we have to have people on board and not be against us because they're not educated, so.
I think one way to educate them, I was just thinking about that slide that you showed with the negative four seventy and the, but I think, try, maybe, just an idea, try putting it in their language, like, what if your income was this, and then all of a sudden, you. Because people have a hard time understanding, I mean, they have a hardest time understanding this budgeting stuff. But if you said to them, what if you were making, you know, five hundred bucks a week, and then all of a sudden, you know, over ten years, you're making less, and then now it's taken ten years to get back up to that level, what's happened to cost of goods, you know? Has your house, has your taxes went down? I don't think so. You know? D T just authorized another increase, so you don't need to, they just got approvals.
But I mean, I sometimes, out in the meeting, where people, or people write letters that they were upset we, we consolidated the high schools, and people still aren't even educated as to why we did that. So there's more work to do, apparently.
I am back going backwards. So this will be a focus here, deficit reduction considerations for next white cities budget managers. And other ideas is probably understated as the fourth bullet there. We truly look to them for other ideas. We in Cole exhaust them sometimes. Think we've exhausted them, and some will come. come up with another one. So, I mean, definitely, as Matt stated, now, any of those are painful, or even if we have to reduce the building budget, departmental, go into our fund balance, none of it's easy anymore. So, we are very judicious about how we deal with it. It's not just, oh, let's go take part of our 3.4 million fund balance and settle it, because it was $110, once they're gone. You better know, as Matt stated earlier, that we've got money coming in to replace that a year or two from now, so that we get back to a stable level. And if you don't, that's, sometimes it's less door open, and it's not bad to use it, but it's not the one you want to go to, I've ever heard. So, we'll, this presentation will be on the website. They're all transparent. We'll email it directly to the board, so you've got it. One of the things we talked about was try really, really being intentional this year about trying to avoid reductions in personnel at the building, right? Easier said than done, but really starting as far away from that as we can. We've got, got folks on a pretty tight, tight, tight budget in terms of key bodies to do the work, right? So, looking at some other ways to do that. Again, these are some of the generic areas. The budget managers group will have the detail underneath that to offer some recommendation about those are the areas we're looking at. Here's what we can live with. And we were very honest last year, we said that building, you know, deans and paras were on the list of consideration, right? We've done some research. We mentioned things like athletic transportation. We have done a variety of research, dug into the data on what things like busing along our athletes cost us. We probably won't be seeing a recommendation this year as related to reducing athletic transportation. I can just tell you that from our research that the juice isn't worth the squeeze, to the point of, so, but we've got to keep the data, right? You gotta have it. So, we did a year review, which we said we were going to do. We did it. I honestly thought going into it, I'd become out of the board this year with the recommendations, do a lot of reduction in the athletic area. It's not there. You know, we'll share a little bit more of that with the budget managers and have that conversation, but we're looking under every rock, and what's motivating, it's motivating us to have the longer-term discussion about changing the structure. So, annually, we're not saying, okay, what blood can we squeeze out of the rock this year? Just no more luck. So, we'll look in a couple of weeks here for the revenue conference, see if there's any other new revelations going out of that. The one that I know I mentioned before, and that I have concern on is, we had a high point in automotive production in 2017, and the state's economy is still, as much as it's been diversified, is still heavily relying on the automotive, automotive-related, tier-one manufacturing, with those numbers coming down to 16 million and below, and really are due to flat out, flatten out there in the early 2020s. That will have pressure on those revenue conferences and revenues to the state. So, that's why I look for those items, because those are things, like you said, like, they didn't tell us about that. They're not going to tell you about that. That's the interpretation we've got to figure out long before, as Matt said, and start planning a year or two, or as far as in the future that we can, dealing with that future, year two, three, four years. So, the next time we present, relative to the budget board, will be following next week's budget managers meeting, and will be able to provide us some of the detail of the recommended reductions to get to that gap we were talking about. And time is the most important thing that budgets like, because every week that passes, we get more solid information. So.
Doesn't mean they won't change it, though.
Well, that's a fact.
Mid-year especially.
So, is there a law in the state that children have to go to school like this week? And the reason I'm saying that is because there's a school district in Denver that went to four days a week.
Saw that story earlier. It's not broken down by a week, Jan. What it is, is there's.
Right, it's hours.
Hours and a number of days total in the year.
Right.
It doesn't say which days.
Right. So, I'm just like, you want brainstorming and out of the box ideas.
We saw the same stamp piece.
And it's like, I read it, and I'm like, you know?
Right.
It would take, I don't know, it just, I.
And.
I understand, maybe some parents wouldn't like it, but, you know, you just mentioned, we got to start changing our delivery.
And that is, those ideas are the ones we're talking about, because a lot of our decisions are based on tradition, right?
Right.
Daycare, after school athletics, you know, things that, you know, or summer jobs, things that aren't necessarily specificationally, but it's convenience, it's tradition, it's, you know, and I'm not saying they're bad things, they just are what they are, right? And you're right, so.
Because it sounded like the board and the teachers and the community had buy into that, from what I read.
I didn't see a summer job, I mean, weekly jobs, every day, I mean, for high school. I had a ton, I had students in my class, when I taught, what your high school was, they were leaving, they had to go work. So.
Well, I mean, why, why is the teen workforce, let's just call it what it is, available to work in the summer months during the day and in the evenings when school's in session? What if we made the teen workforce available to this town during the school year, during the day? As we build, we built the schedule for a student that wanted to work 6 to 12 at a local shop and take some online courses, take some seated courses in the evening, and Muskeville Community College field, there was availability of the structure, the educational structure that didn't close at 2:30 and say, the only thing that we do after 2:30 is athletics or clubs, right? So, if the educational facilities, which there are many in this town, were available more days of the year, later into the evenings, there was a flexible scheduling. Now, as a business owner, and I say, man, I've got, you know, 1,000 teenagers now available potentially, right, to work a morning shift or work an early afternoon shift, where tourism has driven a lot of decisions in this state, and if you don't think that lobby interests is very powerful north of 57, go, go, go to the Labor Commission and talk to some of the folks that are on the, when you start talking about mandatory balanced calendars you're around school, and the folks in Potawatka and Travers and Mackinac and Alpena and Prescott go bananas because they got to have kids working on Labor Day, or their whole year's made.
So, if you go ahead and it's about flexibility, because a lot of the community is very soft and maybe have a dual enrollment in 13th year and trailing the CFI and campus approach. So, people are getting.
We got that.
And the young people are used to that too now, that flexibility, like, hey, Matt Baker, now I got mine, now I'm back here. So, you can lead with it maybe that way, that.
I think you're right. Yeah, we really walked down that pathway a little bit.
And it's been successful, and parents like it, students like it, so. We have to.
He has more stage.
And we have to.
They make lots of comments.
We have to keep Martin physically strong, so he's getting checkups to clean well. This seems very thankless.
I would volunteer myself. I would love to help out with the community stuff, like getting that, getting word out, you know what I mean, helping educate, because I think that's, hopefully I would have some key in that, especially teaching. Bring it at that level. I think that's, that's part of.
At least that's going to be all hands on deck, so absolutely.
You're good on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn is supported.
Aye.
He's waiting, just wait for it, didn't even ask you yet. This is no way. This is fire. This is Becker.
Aye.